This is an open meeting. Posted on the wall right around the corner as you come in is the actual Open Meeting Act. Please, if you would, stand with us for a moment of silence and as well, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beth will continue with roll call.
Grandquist.
Here.
Langley.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Claussen.
Here.
Murin.
Here.
Mooney.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
Pyle.
Here.
All right, and if I could, I would ask for approval of the consent agenda as provided you.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion with a second to approve the consent agenda, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, and as well, looking for approval of the full agenda included in your packet.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion with a second to approve the full agenda, again, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, we're going to jump right to the special presentation tonight, the town hall meeting to receive comments on the Northeast Nebraska Solid Waste Coalition budget and rates for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2016. Randy?
Yes, Your Honor. This is a requirement of the interlocal agreement for the Solid Waste Coalition. As part of the interlocal agreement, town hall meetings are be held in the three largest coalition communities, and that's Norfolk, Fremont, and Columbus. The Solid Waste Coalition Board met on June 10th and approved the preliminary budget that's in the agenda packets tonight for this town hall meeting to receive any public input that would be forthcoming on this budget. This proposed budget, the operating budget, leaves the tipping fees at $24 per ton, same as last year, and assumes Waste Connections continues operating the landfill on behalf of Coalition. Balance forward decreases $183,361. You're probably used to seeing that increasing every year, but we are planning on July 15th, in just a few days, to call the Coalition's outstanding bonds. There's $1,915,000 of remaining bonds outstanding, and paying those off out of cash. The interest rate on those bonds ranges from 2.75% to 3.3%, and we're not earning anywhere close to that on our funds that we're holding for the Coalition. And the call date on those bonds just happened in May 15th, I believe was the call date. So we're calling these basically as soon as we can to take advantage of reducing the, eliminating the interest on those bonds, since there's absolutely no arbitrage to be earned on it, and in fact, negative arbitrage. Use fees increase $108,721, or 4.61% due to $4,530 ton increase in budgeted. And as I said, tipping fees remain at $24 a ton, so that gives use fees of $2,467,418. On the expenditure side, there's a big decrease in personnel costs, they're going down almost 29% or about $27,000. In the prior budgets, we had a full-time and a part-time employee budgeted. This budget has three part-time employees, so that eliminates our group insurance cost, which was $12,747, and also decreases our actual personnel or salaries in here. And these salaries include a 2% cost of living adjustment. Disposal fees increase $23,783, or 2.36% due to the increase in budgeted tonnage. Other professional fees decrease $22,567 because of the permit renewal we had last year. That's something we have to do every five years, and the biggest part of that cost is paying Burns &amp; McDonald to broker DQ on that permit renewal. And also decreasing is the interfund operating transfer out, which is the money that we transfer every year to the closure post-closure fund. We're accumulating that money until we close the landfill, and it'll be available to pay for closure costs at that time and take care of the landfill for 30 years post-closure. Those costs decrease because, as I said, we just did a permit renewal last year, and every time we do a permit renewal, the engineers update the closure post-closure cost estimates, and their updated numbers were less than what the number was five years ago, increased for inflation. So since we have a decrease in our estimated closure post-closure costs, that decreases the amount of annual funding we have to make slightly. Also included in the agenda packet is the budget for the cap modeling, and that's the big change you'll see in this year's budget. Cell five construction is budgeted this year, and along with all the engineering, that's $3,365,000. So that's the big item in this year's budget. We've got a few miscellaneous capital items, like a lawnmower, an infant sign, a snowblower, and $5,000 to extend the depth of a test wall. But for all intents and purposes, our capital outlay is the cell five construction. And even with that big cell five construction, and even with paying off the bonds here in a few days, we're expecting to have a little over $1 million of cash available at the end of the next fiscal year. And that's about as low as we want to go. We'd like to retain about $1 million in case, well, for instance, we'd want to take over operation from Waste Connections, we'd have money available to buy equipment and do that if it would ever become necessary. So that's about as low as we want to let that cash balance go. And then also in the agenda pack is the closure post-closure fund budget. As I discussed earlier, that transfer goes down just a little bit. Total funds available increase 8.36%, going to almost $6.6 million. And approximately half of the increase is due to interest earnings, about half due to the current year funding. And answering questions.
Okay, any questions at all? Lot of numbers there, Randy.
I think you see, the Coalition's operations have been taking along quite well, so been kicking off a lot of cash every year, and as expected, we were, or as we were hoping, I should say, we were hoping we wouldn't have to issue any debt for future cell construction, and so far, that looks like that will probably be the case.
And Randy, were one of three spaces, places that this hearing is held then? Or are we just?
There'll also be a town hall meeting held in Fremont and Columbus. And then there'll be a formal budget hearing by the Coalition Board to approve the final budget. That will probably take place in December, because we want to get the bids in for cell five construction, so the Board can approve those bids at the same time they're approving the budget. I'd keep those meetings down to as few as we can have. It's hard getting everybody together from all over Northeast Nebraska to have these meetings, so we'll actually formally approve the budget probably in December.
Any other questions? Counsel? All right, thanks, Randy, appreciate it. All right, we're going to move on to public hearings. There's a couple of public hearings here that will open together. First is the hearing at the request of Ewan Properties LLC for an amendment to the comprehensive plan from industrial to commercial at 1115 Benita Drive, and as well, the hearing at the same request of the LLC for a zone change from RM, which is Mobile Home, to C3 Service Commercial at 1115 Benita Drive. And we'll open the hearing, and who is speaking to this? Oh, Mr. Johnson, please come forward. State your name, sign the paper, start us off.
Stating my name is easy, writing it's a little tougher.
Well, I think we're used to that.
Gotcha. I'm Dick Johnson, and I'm representing Ewan Properties LLC on this zoning change and on the subdivision that you'll consider later at the meeting. Basically, the Ewan Properties owned the Park Mobile Home Court down on South Side of Benita and off of 12th Street. And the reason for the subdivision, they have, there's one piece of property that has a pretty good-sized metal building on it, and they would like to separate that off with the thought in mind of possibly keeping it and selling the trailer park, possibly putting in storage, or a small laundromat, or convenience store, or something that would be complimentary to the trailer park, Mobile Home Park, excuse me. So we first tried to go with the I-1 zoning, which would be a better, I guess, kind of a better fit out there, since most of the area is industrial, but we couldn't make the setbacks work. So we came back with the C3 zoning, and that's why we're here tonight, is to request that that would be approved. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. If it would help you, I don't, I think you've got a copy of the subdivision plat or something somewhere in your agenda packet.
Okay, so they're going to sell the entire park, but you're just looking at a piece, a single piece here?
This is Lot 1, which is about 150 by 300 feet, right south of Benita Drive and just east of the county shops out there on the South Side. Then the rest of it is the Mobile Home Park, which I believe they're selling, yes.
Okay.
Who's in that building now, Dick?
I think they are, just, I don't know, I'm not sure what they use it for, but they're using, there's no business going on in there that I'm aware of. And it is, right now, is Zoned RM, of course.
Page 101.
Thank you. Hang on, Dick, I'm confused, can you tell?
I've got no knees, I can stand here all night.
Good. Anybody else have questions for him while he's standing before us?
Why, why didn't you end up going I-1?
We couldn't meet the setback requirement, well, specifically the buffer yard requirements on the rear. So there was, I think it was 30, or I think it was a 40-foot requirement, and we had 38 or 39 feet.
No further questions for Dick?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion among counsel? It is a public hearing, is there anyone else that has any questions or wants to look to Dick for further explanation? If not, then what I would look for is, let's see, we need a planning commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held public hearings at the request of Ewan Properties LLC to consider an amendment to the city's comp plan from industrial to commercial and for a zone change from RM Mobile Home to C3 Service Commercial at 1115 Benita Drive. The Planning Commission recommends both the amendment to the comp plan and the zone change be approved with an eight to zero vote.
And as well? What, that's both of them together? Okay, so with that, then, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll look for a motion for consideration of ordinance number 5351, which would be amending the comprehensive plan from industrial to commercial at 1115 Benita Drive.
Your Honor, I've moved ordinance number 5351, amending the comp plan.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Any further discussion? If not, please vote. Look, the title, short title. Yeah, short title.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the future land use map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
And now I'll ask for your vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5351 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5351 on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5351 on second and third. If no further discussion, I would ask for your vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5351 carries on second and third.
Okay, and with that, then, we, I'm looking for a motion for consideration of ordinance 5352, approving the zone change from RM Mobile Home to C3 Service Commercial at 1115 Benita Drive.
Your Honor, I would offer ordinance number 5352 for consideration.
Second.
A motion with a second? Short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5352 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, as there hasn't been any real input from opposition or anything that way, I would move that suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 532 on second and third.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5352 carries on second and third.
All right. Next, we're looking at a public hearing to discuss the use of the keynote-type lottery proceeds for community betterment purposes. Open the hearing here, and are you talking to this one, Shane?
Yes, Your Honor. Back in 2008, February in fact, when we passed, when the community welcomed Keno to town, we, the mayor and council, wanted to use the proceeds of the Keno dollars for community, to meet the statute of community betterment, and then we refined it a bit more to focus on parks and recreation for four years, so from 2008 to 2012. We never did change that resolution, so we've, since then, we've used Keno benefit, or the Keno dollars for parks and recreation for, to meet the community betterment part of the statute. What's before you tonight is Resolution 2015-17, which basically changes that a bit and takes the word "park and recreation" out of the resolution, and then allows mayor and council to meet the statute and use those dollars for community betterment, period. It opens up the opportunity to do more than just parks and recreation. The community betterment definition is pretty broad in statute and allows you to use those dollars for just that, community betterment, how the mayor and council define it, as long as you're meeting the public purpose. And that's what the resolution would do tonight, if you so choose.
Any questions at all, counsel on this?
I don't have a problem with opening it up. I would like to see, and I probably can't do it tonight, but some language where we go back to parks and recreations in the future, so it doesn't get lost in just the black hole of the budget, which happens quite often.
You do realize, though, we certainly can still use it for parks and recreation, community betterment.
Right, we certainly can, but we certainly don't very often unless we really push it that way, you know? So by having it earmarked, I feel more comfortable with it going to park and rec, and our parks are finally getting up to speed, and we're getting a lot of softball, baseball, water facilities done with that money. And I know we've got some good causes coming up next year, so I don't have a problem with those causes, I just would like to see somehow if we could either all agree or revert it back the year after to get it back to where it is, or at least keep it in mind somehow, and I don't know how exactly we can do that.
Well, I just, just to Councilman Faust's point, and a reminder, you've used it for nothing but parks and recreation for the last eight years. So, you know, as far as it getting lost in the budget, it has never gotten lost in the budget, just, I just want to make sure everyone understands that. You've used it for nothing but parks and recreation, so at the council's will, you can use it for community betterment, including parks and recreation, which is all the things that you've been using it for the last eight years. So that's just a direction that we take, your staff takes, from the elected body. So I don't think there's a big fear of that, I mean, my own personal opinion, Dave, there's a big fear of that, but you'll see on your agenda, there's an item to use Keno dollars for the 150th celebration, it's not parks and recreation, but it is, could be considered community betterment in a big way. So in order to do that moving forward, those type of activities, if you have it only pigeonholed as parks and recreation, and then you'd have to take an action every time to change that language. So this simply allows the mayor and council to use it as the statute defined it, and that's for community betterment. So it does give you the flexibility, but any of the arguments that, to or fro, to use it for things other than parks and recreation has to come in front of the body at budget time.
And I don't, and I don't have a fear that we won't use it for that if we really have something, but we've got a couple of big pieces of parks and recreation we got to get done yet, and they're kind of sitting out there, and I don't want to lose sight of them. I don't have any problem with using it for next year with the, with the item coming up, none at all. I just, I've seen it in the years I've been here, when we do this, it does go into the black hole, and I'm not saying this will, but it, I've seen money go into the black hole, and let's just say there's some other things that we have gotten, like from the airport and things, that the money goes into the budget and we lose sight of it. You know, I like to keep it directed into places where we know where it's going, because then it keeps going. So I just want to say the words, I want us to all be cautious that we got to keep on the parks and recreation, and if we got some things we need, don't forget we have that money out there, and if we could put it back in a couple of years, that'd be fantastic, in my opinion. But if we can't, you know, and I know we can or can't, but I know we can always look and say we can use it, I just don't want to get sidetracked on it. And just because we're helping out one thing this next year, which is very, very good thing, you know what I'm saying? So I just want to be cautious.
Yeah, and your point is well made, Councilman, but certainly, we as elected officials sit at the budget meetings, and we're going to hear where it is, they're going to look for it to be going, so we're going to want to be speaking of, if in fact, there is that concern, so going forward. But your point is well stated, so any other discussion on that at all?
I'll just say that I agree with Councilman Faust, we do need to keep in mind the original intent of those dollars, but as we invest heavily, and we have, in parks and rec, there comes a time when we don't have to keep that up continually, so it would be nice to have that flexibility, but let's, at the same time, as you say, Dave, let's not forget where those dollars came from, and community betterment is a great place to put them.
Any other comments? This is a public hearing, is there anyone, I'm sorry, we're going to?
When, when, when the public was sold on bringing Keno to the community, that was a big part of it, was the fact that these dollars would be invested back into parks and recreation, so I think we have to keep that in mind, because that's what, that's what.
It's community betterment, so absolutely.
Yeah, I don't think that point can be made enough, that the original intent was for parks and rec, and it sounds to me that this will be special circumstances that will have public discussion and review if we stray from that path. So I would echo Councilman Faust's concerns, that the original intent stands, and any diversion from it is somewhat of a special circumstance outside of parks and rec.
So, okay, anyone else that wants to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the hearing then and look for consideration of Resolution 2015-17 directing the use of the keynote-type lottery proceeds to be used for community betterment purposes. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
I was going to offer Resolution 2015-17 for consideration.
Second, Your Honor.
A motion with a second down there? Okay. Certainly, there's been discussion on this, need there be more? I guess I question whether or not, is there some concern by taking what it is we're looking at and putting community betterment purposes in there? I mean, do we need to do that specifically if in fact?
It's, yes.
For this one purpose? We?
The community betterment was, is what the statute says. So the park and recreation piece that you added into, that the mayor and council added in in 2008?
We added in.
Was an add-in to be more specific than community betterment, so the community betterment piece has to stay in there.
Okay, very good. Any further questions, discussion? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2015-17 is adopted.
And then we're going to move down to consideration of a memorandum of understanding with the Norfolk Area Chamber of Commerce Foundation, providing for partial funding of the Norfolk 150th Celebration to be held in 2016.
I'd offer the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to consider the memorandum of understanding provided you. Any discussion? I think it was pretty clear.
Mayor?
Yes.
I could clarify one thing also that was stated in here. $10,000 is the initial request, but the $40,000, if and when that request is made, has to go through the budget process, and that, so just wanted to clarify that for the mayor and council to understand that you'll see this coming forward in the budget process, and you have to weigh it against the other priorities of the budget.
Very good. Any questions?
Are dates set for this?
Yes.
Is there a date out there?
There is a date out there, and it's.
It starts June 29, 16?
Yeah, I can't remember the date, but it's June.
June 29.
June 29 through, through July the 6th, I believe.
Yeah, so just a year away, a little shorter than a year.
I thought, actually, isn't Boom supposed to be kicking it off next year?
Boom finishes it, yeah.
Finishes it?
I think so.
Oh, okay. All right, boy, any further discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please do.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right, next we're looking for consideration of approval of ordinance number 5349, annexing attractive land generally located north of Walters East Knoll's 10th Edition, recently planted as Walters East Knoll 11th Edition, which passed on first reading at the June 15th, 2015 city council meeting. Could I have a motion?
I'll introduce ordinance number 5349.
We're looking at the second reading here. Do I have a motion with a second? Any discussion on this? Hearing none? Short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to annex to said city, part of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 24, Township 24 North, Range 1, west of the Sixth Principal Meridian, Madison County, Nebraska.
All right, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5349 carries on second reading only.
All right, and next is consideration of Resolution Number 2015-18, approving the final plat in the subdivision agreement for Ewan Properties LLC. Could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for consideration of Resolution Number 2015-18.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Anything we need to know on this at all, Trent? Everything in place?
Mayor and council, I have reviewed this, and everything looks in place.
We're good to go?
Yep.
Okay. Questions at all? All right, I'd ask you to vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2015-18 is adopted.
And finally, we have a sales tax report, June sales tax report for the April sales. Randy? Randy, yeah, pull that up to you, will you? We have a hard time hearing you sometimes, so, thank you.
You'll see in your agenda packets, the sales tax report for June receipts, which are primarily April sales. The important thing about this report is that it's the first month we're receiving the additional half-cent sales tax for the library. If you look at the spreadsheet in the agenda packet, you'll see If you look at the spreadsheet in the agenda packet, you'll see we're showing 192,000 approximately as being the additional half-cent for April. And that does not include motor vehicle sales tax. Your normal sales tax runs two months behind when the consumer buys the item. The city will actually get that sales tax receipts a couple of months later. For instance, in April, when consumers went to the store, bought taxable items, the merchant remitted that with their sales tax return for April to the state in May, and then remits it to the city in June. With motor vehicle sales tax, it runs a month behind that. Somebody that buys a motor vehicle in April probably isn't going to register that motor vehicle until 30 days later, because there's a big hit for the sales tax and motor vehicle tax when you register that vehicle. The county then has that in their hands in May. They pay it to the state when they file their return for May and June, and then the state pays that to us in July. So the motor, the additional half-cent on motor vehicles will come to us next month. We'll start getting that. So this is the non-motor, first month of the non-motor vehicle portion of that sales tax. So you'll see those receipts increasing for the motor vehicle sales tax in the next month, and then three years out, when the sales tax fades off, it'll be the same thing. We'll have in, on vacuum, we'll have a month of motor vehicle sales tax, is this half-cent after we've collected the non-motor vehicle portion. But the sales tax for the one and a half cent is up about 1.9 percent from last June, and year-to-date, our sales are up about 7.7 percent from the prior year. Like, we're still seeing, you know, people coming in and getting their repairs done on their homes from the hail damage that was done by the hailstorm last June. So that's, that's the good news with sales tax, it's continuing to trend up, and we got the first of our half-cent sales tax for the library this month.
Okay. Any questions at all for Randy on that? Okay. Hearing none? Before we do adjourn, we're all going to be marching over to the city auditorium here shortly for our open forum to have the discussion regarding the city auditorium and the YMCA. So I will remind you all, those of you that may be watching and are interested in but cannot make it down to the city auditorium, however, I will tell you, it's going to be a pleasant evening in there. It's not quite so hot out there, so come on down and join us. But if not, Norfolk Daily News, if you will go to their web, their website, you will be able to view it, it's being streamed, is my understanding, so go to norfordailynews.com, and they'll give you opportunity to click on and see what's going on. That meeting will start at 7:00 PM at the city auditorium. So other than that, we're adjourned.